Good evening. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Good evening, all members. Thank you for our teachers, our students, our parents, and our administrators in contributing to make this a very smooth opening for the school year. Guide us tonight in making the best decisions which are in the best interests of our students in this community. These things we ask in your name.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Reagan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson, here. Ms. Moon, here. Ms. Stranglin.
Here.
Ms. Sidesaw.
Here.
Ms. Vaughn.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Mark.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Before we go on to our regular item.
Yeah, thank you. Tonight's a sad night in St. Bernard Parish, and I especially for our school board family. Darlene Acevedo was a good board member. She worked for the kids at his parish to give them a good education. She even had people come from across the sea, the Big Pond, you know, they call it, you know, for, you know, and I think they had about 25, if I'm mistaken or whatever. No, she was a team player, you know, so our condolences really go out to all the Acevedo family, and she'd be deeply missed. But she was a character, I'll tell you that. Everybody knows Darlene, she was a character, and she'll be missed. And again, our condolences go out to the Acevedo family. Thank you.
Excuse me.
And so, at this time, we'd like to go and take a moment of silence, you know, for Darlene Acevedo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England, and I apologize for not keeping it together, fellow board members. But as Cliff said, Darlene was a great person, a good-hearted, wonderful person, a mother, a wife, a grandmother, and she's gonna miss, be missed sorely. Darlene always put a smile on all of our faces, always, and with us tonight, her daughter's here, Courtney. Courtney, would you please stand?
Please.
And our deepest condolences, Courtney, to you, your sister Brooke, and to your dad, Gerard, and to all your children. And we're gonna miss her a whole lot, too, and thank you for being here tonight. Again, my apologies for not keeping it together.
Perfect.
Okay. First item on the agenda tonight is a presentation by Dr. Tina Tenny from the Nunez Community College. Dr. Tenny?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Voeche, board members, and guests. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of time tonight. And before I say anything, I also would like to just offer my condolences and my sympathies on the loss of a board member. And it makes tonight's presentation meaningful in that we recognize all of the support that we get, honestly, from everyone here that supports education. And in terms of time, I know that time is a commodity, particularly at the beginning of school years. We know that's an intense time. And as we look forward each year to a new school year, 2020 and 2021 have been incredibly challenging to navigate. At the beginning of each school term, we have an annual convening of all of our employees, faculty, and staff for our annual convocation. And last year, we were unable to do so. We did it virtually. So this year, we were very eager to be able to have protocols in place for the safety of our employees to convene. And as part of our convocation each year, we have two awards that are given for the Spirit of Nunez, and one of which is the Chancellor's Community Partner Award. This year, we were very excited to recognize Ms. Doris Voeche as the Superintendent of St. Bernard Schools to receive this Community Partner Award. Ms. Voeche, as you all know, is committed and dedicated and passionate to providing access and opportunity to our students here in St. Bernard Parish. Shawmet High School has been our number-one partner in terms of providing that access through our dual enrollment programs. This year, if you follow tweets at all in social media, I was very excited today, ironically, that it came out that we are, this year, providing opportunities to 176 of the Shawmet High School students, earning, participating in over 365 classes and earning over 1,100 college credit hours just this year. And that would not be possible without the incredibly hard work of our faculty and staff to make that happen, and without the leadership that provides that information of what's available. Ms. Voeche has, through these very challenging times, been able to support our mission, expand coursework through our dual enrollment opportunities. But more than that, I would say that, Ms. Voeche, you've been an incredible partner in terms of navigating the pandemic as we reach out, and you've shared wisdom and insight and guidance and frustration in all of those things that we have to do throughout the school year. Your partnership is truly appreciated, and it goes without saying that the mission of Nunez Community College would not be possible if we didn't stand on the shoulders of giants. And truly, Ms. Voeche, our ability to provide the service and the access that we do is in large part due to our partnership with you all in the school system here in St. Bernard Parish. So, thank you. It's my pleasure and my privilege to present this on behalf of Nunez Community College to you as the Spirit of Nunez Community Partner recipient for this year.
It's beautiful, and the Spirit of Nunez Community Partner Award, it means a tremendous amount to me. I can remember of, you know, this is what you're reminiscing, I've been 50 years here in the St. Bernard Parish Public School System, and as a very young teacher, I also taught at the community college when it was still heavily affiliated with the K-12 system. So I went from teaching there and then moving, I guess, over here to the central office and administering a lot of these programs. And we have had a tremendously long relationship with Nunez, when Dr. Tommy Warner was the chancellor there, and now with you there. We have upgraded the programs tremendously, and what we can offer our students in the dual enrollment program is just phenomenal, because we do offer, in partnership with you, two tracks. We have the Career and Technical Education Track, where our students, still in high school, are earning the industry-based credentials through the welding, the electrical, the certified nursing, all of the different career pathways, so that when they're graduating, they're coming out with credentials that mean something, and many are ready then to move into the workforce. Along with that, we have our students who are going to attend four-year universities, still in high school, taking their general education courses that they would take as freshmen in college. So they're taking the math, the English, the sciences, and sometimes going away to a four-year university, having earned 12 to 15 or more credit hours. It's a tremendous savings to parents from a tuition standpoint, and what it really does with our students, it helps them become persistent learners. And we're finding out that they are more apt then to complete their college degrees or complete their career pathway if they have those opportunities when they're at junior and senior high school, in high school, to begin those programs. So the tremendous work that the staff at Shawmet High School does, it's unbelievable. Eileen LaBeauf, who is there, runs the CTE programs. Wayne Warner, as the principal, has for years made that a top priority. So we feel that the kids at Shawmet High are getting opportunities that are not being offered anywhere else to other students. So we thank you very much for partnering with us, and I think not only does it help every one of our students, it helps our community as well. It's a quality-of-life issue. It helps our kids to become better educated and to become, then, better community members. So I thank you for this, but I'll accept it on behalf of the incredible staff at Shawmet High School and everyone here in our school system who work very, very hard each and every day to present the best educational opportunities that exist for our children. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Ms. Voeche. And Dr. Tenny, thank you so much for coming here tonight and being with us and presenting this award to Ms. Voeche. You know, the dual enrollment program started back in the 90s, and it started with one class with Ron Chapman and just a few students at Shawmet High School, and it's just grown and blossomed, and it's just a wonderful thing that we, that our students have this opportunity to attend the community college along with high school. And as Dr. Warner would always say, even back then, that we have a gem in our own backyard with the community college, and that we do.
Yeah, we do.
So thank you very much, and to you and your staff for your continued support for allowing our high school students to take all these courses while they're still in high school, and of course, to Mr. Warner and the entire staff at Shawmet High School. Ms. Voeche, you know, you'll make it happen every day, so we appreciate all the hard work that everyone does on both sides. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Next item is Communications Update. We have some super news tonight. Good evening, Lexi.
Hi. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, you have a little bit of a booklet, because this is my first official Communications Update for the parish. And I just want to thank you for all of your support so far. I'm very excited to present these updates to you for the start of the 2021-2022 school year. We wanted to provide you with our team goals for this year, so that you can see where we'd like to go as far as communications are concerned for the parish. The St. Bernard Parish Public Schools Communications Team is excited to begin a new school year. This year, our team goal aligns with our district theme of unity. This year, we will work to strengthen community partnerships, communicate effectively and efficiently, align communication between schools, promote events and achievements locally, statewide, and nationally, when applicable, expand outreach and awareness of the district's people, programs, and partnerships, document ongoing successes via print, online, and video, and increase viewership and following of our varied communications platforms. To start off, we wanted to present you with our latest press releases. Super excited for the district. Our Shawmet Elementary Administrative Team is new, and we welcomed them with a press release on August 9th. We wanted to provide that full version for you in case you missed it. And then just recently, last week, we announced Lieutenant Colonel David Farley, because he is now leading our JROTC program at Shawmet High School, and we're very excited to have him. If you turn to page three, I have a little table here for you that includes links of all of our Teacher of the Year media. My intention is to send the digital version of this to y'all after the meeting. It includes not only articles of Annalise, our 2022 statewide Louisiana Teacher of the Year, but there are also some video spotlights and interviews that went to print and online that we wanted y'all to see, and so I'll share that with you after the meeting. And then you'll notice on page four, we have a lot more analytics than normal. Our Facebook analytics for the last 28 days show a booming improvement, with page views reaching 4,382. Our most popular posts, which I'm very excited to share with you and show you in just a minute, are our new teacher features. We're using the hashtag #TeacherFeatureTuesday, where every week throughout the school year, we will spotlight an educator from one of our schools. And so that seems to be going really well, and we're very thankful to be able to spotlight more educators through this little feature. I mentioned briefly last month that St. Bernard Parish Public Schools now has a Twitter account, and so that is going really well. If you'd like to follow us, that information is right here. I did provide a 28-day summary, which we will use as our baseline going forward, to explain to you and show you how we are growing as time goes on. We also, just over the last week, created a St. Bernard Parish Public Schools LinkedIn page to support us in expanding our reach and attaining certified educators and support staff. On page five, you will see our website analytics from May, the end of school, through August, right now, of 2021. We've had 128,752 visits, lots of views and targeted visits as well. We're very excited to see this grow with our new websites. We know that those are very popular, and we're very excited to have more accessible and user-friendly websites for our community. As I just mentioned previously, I've included the graphics here for you for our Teacher Feature Tuesdays. The first feature debuted on Tuesday, August 10th. Each week, a new teacher will be featured. These features are on our Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, as well as our homepage on our district website. And so those graphics are provided for you here. We have Henna Jaiber from Araby Elementary, Felix Caserta from Trist Middle, and Dar Brown from Lacoste Elementary. With that said, I'm very excited in just a moment to present our August super news to you. I did want to mention that some of the summer activities that you will see featured in this month's super news took place prior to the governor's most recent mask mandate. All students and staff were following proper protocols and safety measures that were in place at that time. And so my amazing team, Jack and Barry, if you could please start our super news, we'd be very excited about it. It runs about 10 minutes long.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News.
Hello, I'm Barry Lamore, and welcome back to school, and welcome back to Super News, the show that takes a look back at some of the good things happening in our school system. I'd also like to welcome my new co-host for Super News, our new communications director, Lexi Pritchard.
Thank you for the warm welcome, Barry. And while I'm new to this position, I'm not new to education or St. Bernard Parish. My husband and I live in Shawmet. We both work in our schools, and three of our children attend public school here. I recently served as the Deputy Chief of Staff for the Louisiana Department of Education, and before that, I was an English teacher at Shawmet High School. And, I'm not sure if you remember, but I even co-hosted with you once before, back in January of 2017.
Man, I looked good back then, huh? Anyway, we'll kick things off with our back-to-school kickoff. With a theme of unity and community, this year's virtual back-to-school event began with a moment of reflection by Mr. England, followed by a welcome by Board President Diana Dysart.
As we approach this new school year, we know that new challenges await, but we also know our greatest strength is when we are united as one. As a school board, our goal is to provide quality educational instruction in a safe environment, so that our students are responsible, productive citizens, and lifelong learners.
And as it does each year, the kickoff also had a number of videos highlighting our school leaders and administrators. The presentation also included some funny moments, uniting our school family in laughter and dance.
(Singing) So let's keep giving, so let's keep giving. They're the choice of making. We're changing all their lives. If it's true, we'll make a better day, just you and me.
Ms. Voeche also uses virtual gathering as a way to thank our employees and to highlight some of the important issues and initiatives for this year.
So we need to plan our work and work our plan. With that in mind, we have developed our strategic plan, which sets the direction and vision for our system over the next five years. Developed in collaboration with school leadership and key stakeholders, the plan outlines four major goals. It's important to note that none of these goals work in isolation. Just as many small threads can create a beautiful tapestry, so too the parts of our plan enhance our entire educational landscape in working to provide quality educational instruction. So our students are responsible, productive citizens, and lifelong learners.
We miss seeing everyone in person, but the virtual kickoff was a good way to start a new year.
Our students also had a good start to the school year, as our district welcomed more than 7,800 students back into our classrooms. From pre-K to high school, data has shown in-person learning is crucial to student success. So we appreciate our teachers who are committed to teaching, and we welcome our students back to school.
And while these students were enjoying their first day back to school, many others were enrolled in summer programs to enrich their skills in areas like theater tech and band. Here, we see some of the action taking place in and out of the theater, as lights, sound, and music were all part of the fun.
In addition to being the statewide Teacher of the Year, Annalise Caserta Desco was also asked to be the Music Ambassador for the Donna Edwards Initiative called MAM, the first lady of Louisiana's Teach Program that focuses on music, art, and movement. In keeping with that aim, Annalise hosted a vocal clinic this summer for her performers. Over the two-week session, student work focused on warm-up exercises, projection, and audition techniques, while fine-tuning their skills for the upcoming school year.
And whether it has been television interviews, in print, or on social media, Annalise has done a great job of highlighting her platform and promoting the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools.
Annalise also created the Arts Strong Series, which hosts diverse guests from the local and extended community who are accomplished in their fields of visual and performing arts and the business that surrounds them. Visiting presenters will lead master classes, workshops, discussions, and presentations for students.
You could sing in a group, or you could sing as a solo, on your own. There is, oh my gosh, my favorite part was the musical theater, like doing the shows and being able to like act and sing and do all the things was very fun, because I learned so many things that I probably wouldn't have been able to learn otherwise, and especially the Performing Arts Academy, since it's during the summer, you get to spend more time there, and it was very fun, especially because the role that I had was very important to me. Actually, Lena Bowie and I, we played together in Into the Woods. We were co-narrators, so that was very fun and very enlightening.
That is awesome. That is awesome. And you're right, that CHS Voices is a lot more, right? Not just a choir, but music theater, vocal arts, all the solo and chorus stuff. And I'm thrilled that you enjoyed that well-rounded opportunity presented by CHS Voices and the Academy.
And we'd also like to give a shout-out to Shay Patton, who worked with the tech crew at Shawmet High on producing a great video as part of the inaugural episode of the Arts Strong Series.
(Singing) I sought to play you. But it's not my fault, the world's not the same. As much as I'd like to be open-minded, I'm done with the gaze. The universe wants to fly.
Also promoting their schools are the three outstanding teachers who were recently selected for our new initiative, our Tuesday Teacher Feature. Our first selection was Henna Jaiber, a second-grade teacher at Araby Elementary who radiates enthusiasm and creativity, as seen in the impressive videos she creates for her school's social media account.
Felix Caserta, a quest-for-success teacher at Trist Middle School, was also recognized this month for his contributions in and out of the classroom. Felix is a true leader and a beloved member of the Trist family.
Dar Brown, a kindergarten teacher at Lacoste Elementary, was our final honorary for this month's Teacher Feature. An energetic, caring teacher who always radiates positivity, Dar is a true blessing to our school family. We're thankful for these three amazing educators who are united with their students and community.
We'd also like to welcome Lieutenant Colonel David Farley to our community and the JROTC program at Shawmet High School. He comes to us with a vast amount of experience, and our 90 cadets enrolled in the program are very lucky to have him in charge. We'll learn more about the lieutenant colonel and his program in a future episode of Super News.
We'd also like to welcome back all of our second and third graders who are making a literal splash as our students return back to the CHS auditorium.
Our second-grade program, they come for eight days. They also spend the ninth day now watching the American Red Cross water safety video. We teach them how to blow bubbles, how to float on their stomach, how to float on their back. We teach them how to kick. We teach them how to dive in nine feet and jump in with a life jacket. St. Bernard Parish is the only public school district that has a comprehensive swim program starting in the second grade, and our goal is to teach every second grader how to swim.
Well, that's about all the time we have, but before we go, we'd like to pay tribute to a member of our school family who recently passed away, school board member Darlene Acevedo. Mrs. Acevedo, who represented District Three, always put the children first and always fought in the best interests for all of our students. She was a great team member who worked with her fellow board members to provide our students with the best facilities and resources in the state.
She was also a fun-loving, positive presence in our parish. From helping coordinate the local student exchange program to planning community events, concerts, and celebrations, Darlene was always there. A true lover of live music and laughter, we will miss her warmth and her smile.
We offer condolences to the Acevedo family and are grateful for her many years of service to our schools and the children who attend them.
Stay safe, mask up, and let's do all we can to keep the unity in our community, and we'll see you next time on Super News.
Lexi? Ms. Pritchard, thank you so much. That was a wonderful super news, and you did an excellent job on your, I guess, your first official super news collaboration, of course, with Jack and Barry in the back. They've always done a wonderful job, so we thank you. Y'all did, again, an excellent presentation and welcome, and you filled in right away, and you're doing an awesome job. And again, we're back with Barry and Jack in the back. So thank you very much. Anyone else?
I just want to...
Mr. Warner?
Just to agree with Mrs. Dysart, you know, thank you for what you do with communications, our website, our Facebook page, now we're on Twitter, you know, LinkedIn, all of these sites that, it takes a lot, and it really is important work that you guys are doing. It's very important, and it helps all of stakeholders have access to everything that we do, and it's real important, and it helps school board members the most. I appreciate it the most, because I can refer people to the webpage, or to our Facebook, or all these different sites. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate what you guys are doing, Jack and Barry, all the... and Barry, all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. It's a privilege and an honor to be able to share the work that is being done and has been done in St. Bernard Parish Public Schools. And so, to be able to spotlight that is something I'm very thankful for.
Anyone else? Thank you again. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is approval of the minutes, approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee Meeting of August 10, 2021 into the August 24, 2021 regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
We're back to that again.
Excuse me? Yeah, yeah. As you know, we've spread out again, and so we do not have access to our voting machines. So, we'll be voting verbally each on every item. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is an approval of special minutes meetings of June 22, 2021, as published on July 30, 2021. There is a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an approval of regular monthly meeting minutes of June 22, 2021, as published on July 30, 2021. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an approval of the special meeting minutes of June 30, 2021, as published on July 30, 2021. Motion by Mr. England. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion?
Just to note that this was our special meeting at Smith Elementary School. That's all, just to note that, that's all. No discussion.
Okay. Note is made that that was a special meeting that was held at Smith Elementary School. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an approval of special meeting minutes of July 13, 2021, as published on August 13, 2021. There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of July 27, 2021, as published on August 13, 2021. There's a motion by Ms. White, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is a review of the personnel changes for August 2021, and we'll take a few minutes to look at the updated list since the committee meeting. Those highlighted items, or the new ones since the committee meeting.
And if I may, Ms. Diceart?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things on these changes for your information. Most of what has transpired since the committee meeting has been movement of support personnel, which is what we normally do at the beginning of the school year. But I'd like you to note on page two, under the certificated resignations, we have Ms. Elizabeth Winslow, who was our principal at Shawmet Elementary. You know, she had done retire, return to work, so it's not an official retirement, as we would normally do to have to be termed a resignation. But in actuality, it is a retirement, which is at the end of this month, at the end of September. And I just wanted to note what a valued person she has been as a teacher, as an administrator over the last, oh, maybe 40 years. And she told me just recently, once that official retirement date is there, then she hopes to come back part-time as an interventionist in helping at our school. So, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay.
And when you finish it, I have one other announcement to go ahead.
On the retirement list also, Janice Tambarella is retiring, and we want to thank Ms. Tambarella for how many years of service and to wish her a happy retirement. And then back to Ms. Winslow, as you said, it's a resignation as opposed to the retirement listing on here because she came back to work for us after she retired, but never did really leave us. And, you know, Ms. Votchay, I think it's been over 45, maybe close to 50.
Could be. As we all get up there in age, you know, the years just seem to run together.
But she's given the majority of her life to education, and I remember her as a younger teacher, and then she's done an excellent job for us as principal feminine many, many years. And, you know, even after Katrina, she came back with us. And, you know, she traveled many, many miles to be with us, as did many other teachers who came back to be in St. Bernard Parish to educate the children who came back. And we just really appreciated all of Liz's wonderful years that she spent with us, and it's great to hear that she's going to come back as an interventionist. So, we won't really be losing her. Her knowledge is just a huge amount and wealth of knowledge and sincerity and love for children. So, happy retirement, poor Tom, Ms. Winslow, and we look forward to you coming back. Anyone else? Ms. Lemoine?
I just wanted to echo your sentiments too and extend my congratulations to Ms. Winslow on her retirement. She will always hold a special place in my heart because she was my first boss as a teacher at CF Raleigh and was just an incredible mentor, so supportive, especially being a new teacher. And I always tell the story that I'll never forget my first day of work there, you know, she was principal. She had this gorgeous yellow suit on, and she was out in front of the school building before anyone got there, sweeping out, you know, the front of the school to make sure that it looked nice for all the students. And it really, it's a memory that stuck with me because as the leader, there was nothing that she wouldn't ask her staff to do that she wouldn't do herself. You know, and to be out there in front of the school cleaning, you know, it was just a moment that stuck with me. So, happy that she'll still be a part of the school system and wish her happy retirement as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
Just having worked with Ms. Winslow and just being around at several of the jobs she had, it's, she's always, always was a pleasant person to deal with, and was professional, and we're losing a great educator. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Anyone else?
Everybody. Everybody else says something about Ms. Winslow. She was my, she was my principal at St. Claude Heights, so happy retirement.
Anyone else?
And the, and the other announcement I would like to make today, we all know that Joni Bloom is going to be retiring in a couple of months, and as our food service director, you didn't know, okay, well, she's going to be retiring as our food services supervisor. And we had advertised for her replacement. We had four candidates who are very well-qualified. The interview committee was, of course, Joni Bloom headed it because she knew exactly what she was looking for, and it was David Fernandez who that person reports to, and myself. We interviewed the candidates, and we are appointing Mr. Michael Morell as the new food services manager. He has a tremendous wealth of experience. He grew up here in St. Bernard Parish. He graduated from Andrew Jackson High School. He went into the military, and he spent the last 20-plus years in the military, at which point he got into their food services arena in the military. For five years, he was the head person on the USS Farragut Navy Destroyer, where he was responsible for feeding round-the-clock all of the personnel. So, he supervised the people and took care of all the food service operations. Then he moved to the Navy Construction Battalion Center in Gulfport, Mississippi, where for seven years, he ran their program as the operations manager. He supervised the military personnel and the civilians who provided food services for the entire base. And then, for five years, he was called into service at the White House, where he was the special projects chief there at the White House with the food service operations. He served two presidents, President Obama and President Trump, and their families, and he coordinated all of the food service activities at the White House with foreign dignitaries, heads of state, and coordinated the travel for them. He retired from the military, has moved back here to St. Bernard Parish, and he is thoroughly qualified for the position. I think when you look at the wealth of his experience in supervising people, both in the military and civilians in a food service operation, and he did the budgeting, all the business operations with the budgeting and purchasing and all the different things we need. So, he's our recommendation for the, and we have hired him to be our new food services manager here in St. Bernard Parish. So, just letting everyone know.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Congratulations to Mr. Morell, and we look forward to your work and your, sharing your wonderful experiences and leading our system and helping to feed all of our students and teachers on a daily basis here in St. Bernard Parish. So, congratulations and welcome to Mr. Morell. And with Ms. Joni Bloom, Ms. Votchay, when is her official last day?
Well, we keep trying to push that back.
Good.
You know, we're talking at the end of September, and we might get into October a little bit, but Joni and her husband, her husband taught for us. He retired from the school system, and she is doing so now, and she'll be moving to be closer to her daughter and family, moving out of state for that purpose. So, but she has pledged to help train the new person, to be there as much as possible. And, you know, with technology nowadays, she will be available for anything that he will need, and has pledged that as well. So, she's not leaving quite yet, but hopefully we'll have some overlap as one moves and the other takes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. And Ms. Bloom will be another great loss to the, to our system. She's came in as a young teacher and taught home ec, and then she's done just a fabulous job with our food services department and for many years, and we're going to miss Joni as a food service coordinator, but also as a friend and, you know, as a colleague. Joni and I go way back from, since high school and college, and, you know, she was always just a great person and just work ethic that was just, you know, stellar. And so, but we do want to wish Joni a happy retirement when she does officially retire, but to let her know that she'll be missed greatly. Okay, Mr. Warner?
I just agree with that. I think Ms. Bloom did a first-class job, and, I mean, this guy, Mr. Morell, he's got tough shoes to fill. I don't care if you serve presidents or not, he's got tough shoes to fill. Because she did a first-class job for this school system, and we're really going to miss her. Thank you, Mrs. Diceart.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
Ms. Votchay, I was, I noticed with all the support changes, I don't see any changes with bus drivers. Are we okay with the, I know some systems are having problems with bus drivers.
Well, we have enough to cover all the routes if everyone is there on that day. We need some substitute bus drivers. We need some additional bus drivers to fill in where necessary and to help supplement the force. As we've said over and over, in fact, Alex Schneider today, there's a hiring event that the Chamber is sponsoring, and she is manning that booth over there today. And that's one of the areas that we are trying to recruit for, our bus drivers, and, you know, you need the CDL in order, with the air brakes endorsement and all that kind of good stuff in order to drive a bus. But we are unique in that we also have a training program that if anyone is interested and feel they're suited to do so, we teach you how to do that. We train you to do it and then employ you as well. So, Julie Gennart runs an excellent transportation program there. So, if there is anyone interested in becoming a school bus driver, you just need the willingness to learn and the calmness to operate a bus with a busload of children in it, and we will teach you the rest.
Are you doing any advertising in local papers?
Yes, we've continued to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on personnel changes? Okay, there's no action to be taken on this item. Next item is an adoption of the 2021 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to school board policy JD. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. White. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion on this item? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. And just for the public's sake, these policies were all reviewed at the committee meeting, but if, we can also have discussion tonight if we did. Next item is an adoption of revision to school board policy JCD. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Jackson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of revision to school board policy JCDAB. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Mr. Warner makes the motion. Mr. Long seconds. Any discussion on the item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to school board policy JCDAC. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Lemoine. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next is an adoption of the revision to school board policy JDD. There was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? Take so. Motion by Mr. England, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Motion by Mr. England, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of revision to school board policy JDE. There was a recommendation by the committee.
Still move.
There's a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an update on the 2021-2022 student enrollment counts. Ms. Votchay?
Okay, as you can see, we've got, as far as the head count goes this year, 7,788 students who have reported to school. We still have some students out there who have either not yet come in because of maybe COVID or quarantining situations, so this number will grow as we continue. Um, I think what we're also seeing is we had a, a glut, I guess, of, um, students in last year in the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, so we're having that movement. As you can see from this data, the elementary and middle numbers are going down, high school's going up, and that's gonna correct itself in the next couple of years because those numbers, it just, uh, seems like that age child is, is prominent when we look at it, grade level by grade level. So 7,788 students have, um, arrived at school at this point. We've got 402 in our four-year-old program and, you know, we're one of the only school systems in the state with a universal four-year-old pro, program that is open to every child regardless of income. And, um, even though they're not funded, you know, in our funding formula, K to 12, and we fund those positions through a combination of monies with some of our federal monies, our tobacco settlement money, and then local con, local dollars as well because we really believe that, uh, children should be offered that opportunity at the age of four to get them ready for, uh, kindergarten. So these are our numbers this year. It looks, you know, looks good, pretty stable, and it should be growing.
Okay, Ms. Long, um, Mr. Long?
Uh, Ms. Votchay, how does, uh, does 7,788 compare to last year?
Well, if you see at the bottom, last year, um, now you see, last year we had the numbers in September and the, usually we do it each August at this meeting, but if you remember last year with the COVID situation, opening dates all got pushed back. So this is really a comparison to the September number. You see last year there were 7,826 students. So it is about, let's see, 12 and 26, about 38 students. Um, fewer, but those numbers when we get to September should be growing.
Okay. Okay, good.
So it's about the same as last.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Uh, Ms. Votchay, I just have, um, one, uh, question about classrooms. Where, we're fine on the, is the number of classrooms that we need at each of the schools, including Chalmers High School?
Including Chalmers High School, yes.
Okay, I know there's a lot of concerns out there about Chalmers High with having so many students and only having one high school, um, and as I know I've explained to many people in the community, we have the ninth grade academy that's by itself. And then we have the, um, 10th, 11th, 12th grade on the Chalmers High side.
Right.
Um, and it looks as though, right now, the Chalmers, um, the high school numbers are a little bit down from last year. Correct, Ms. Votchay?
Uh, a little bit up.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, a little bit up.
Twenty, okay. A little bit up. We had that big eighth grade class that moved in, right.
The eighth, oh, that was the big class.
Big eighth grade going in, 12th grade leaving. So we had more eighth graders last year than 12th graders.
Okay.
So you're gonna see that for a couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's gonna level out. And for those concerns, and I guess maybe it's, it's a, I guess, when you talk about age, when I to, when I first started teaching at Chalmers High School back in the 1970s, we had over 1,700 boys at the school and we were in just the side on the main campus without all of the additional classrooms and facilities there. Um, right now, we've got on the ninth grade side, which, where Lacoste Elementary, used to be years ago, for those of us who were around then, we've got 600 ninth graders on the ninth grade side. So on the main campus, we've got about 1,400 students, which is even less than what we had in the 1970s without all of the additional facilities. So while it seems like a lot of students, it's really in what we used to have as two separate schools. So it's just all under the one umbrella, but the ninth grade academy, all the ninth graders are on the Lacoste side. And they've got, you know, cafeteria and gymnasium and all the classrooms on that side for the ninth graders. So it's really fewer students in that main building than we had back in the seventies, 70s and 80s.
And how many did you, or did you say a number for the ninth grade academy?
About 600.
600.
Mm-huh.
Okay.
Actually, about 618.
Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Yeah, uh, and I'd like to, uh, compliment Mr. Warner because every time I visit Chalmers High School and you walk the halls, it's so quiet and, and they do a fantastic job over there of, uh, managing that, that, uh, those 1,400 students.
I know it's, it's, it seems like it's a lot of students, but we have on that campus, we have three gymnasiums, we have two large cafeterias, two libraries, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a large campus, so it's not all congregated in one spot. And I know sometimes you say, well, at the beginning of school when you had the new kids coming in, there was congestion, they didn't know their way around. Now, if you walk the halls, like you were saying, during class time, it's, it's.
So quiet, so quiet.
You know, all the kids are in class. Now during the change of classes, they all go up in the hallways and they're moving around, so that's a lot of kids that move around, but.
It seems like they have a good system for moving the children also. That's good, great, thank you.
Anyone else on, um, enrollment numbers? Any other discussion?
There being none, we'll go to the next agenda item. Thank you, Ms. Votchay, for providing these numbers for us. Okay. Next item on the, um, agenda is the Declaration of a Board Vacancy in School Board District Three. Is there a motion to declare a board vacancy at this time? So Mr. Motion, uh, Mr. England makes the motion, Mr. Long seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of appointment of interim member for School Board District Three. Ms. Votchay?
Okay, if you have, um, in the information we gave you even for the first one, we have a letter here from the Secretary of State outlining the process that we need to follow to fill that particular term. And if you look under the, um, background information in 7.2, you see a copy of the revised statute that when a vacancy occurs in the membership, the remaining members of the board shall within 20 days declare the vacancy, which you just did, and then make arrangements to fill it within that 20-day period. The letter that we received from the Secretary of State outlines that we have to fill the vacancy by September 3rd. And, which will be the next item, we have to call a special election according to the revised statute to the state of Louisiana. And that special election, when we get to that next item, will be both the March and the April, um, election dates that are set. That's outlined to us by the Secretary of State's office, and you're gonna see that under 7.3 when we get to that particular point. So in order to, uh, fill the appointment, what we did was to put out an advertisement to see who within the community who lived in that particular district was interested. And we have two people who have expressed interest in filling it on an interim basis because as the statute says, the, if the vacancy occurs more than a year, in other words, if there's more than a year to the election, we have to call the special election to fill it. If the vacancy would have been less than a year to the regular election, we could have appointed and then called it along with the regular election. So because this one is more than a year, we have to declare the vacancy, call a special election, and fill the vacancy, um, until that special election. So we would recommend at this time, since we have two people, and I know the board wants to take time, to interview both people who have expressed interest and talk with them about why they wish to be a member of the board and discuss with you their qualifications and their desire, that we would recommend that you would set a special meeting aside that has to be held prior to September 3rd in order to complete this process.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Mr. England?
Yeah, at this time, um, looking over this information from the two candidates, they more, they well qualify, well, um, so at this time, I'd like to call for a special meeting on September 1st at 6 o'clock here at the school board office for the interviews, for the consideration of the appointment of interim member for School Board District Number Four.
Need a second on that?
Yeah. Okay, there is a motion by Mr. England to call a special meeting on September 1st at 6 o'clock, and it has been seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion on that motion?
So, um, the.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Dyson. So the, um, the period to submit applications is, is ended?
Correct.
Okay.
It, the application, yes, the application.
Was today.
Was today at 4:00.
Okay.
The deadline.
All right, that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, just a clarification, so the meeting's intent is to interview the, the two applicants who have, um, offered to serve in the capacity of School Board Member District Three.
Right, and to, a special election can be called, you know, to fill that vacancy at this time.
Election can be called, okay.
Yes.
All righty, anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carries. There will be a special meeting on September 1st. Okay, next item is a resolution to call a special election to fill the vacancy in School Board District Three.
Right, so what you have again is we put in your packet the letter from, um, the Secretary of State's office indicating that the next available election is March 26, 2022, and then April 30th, 2022, with qualifying dates in January 26, 27, and 28. So we've prepared a resolution that, um, I think, I guess, Ms. Dyson, you need to read into the minutes or if you want me to, whichever you choose.
Okay. All right, so the resolution reads as such, "Whereas a vacancy has been declared in District Three of School District Number One of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, whereas the term of office for the vacant District Three seat exceeds one year, whereas in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 18402E and Louisiana Revised Statute 18602, the St. Bernard Parish School Board must issue within 20 days of the resulting vacancy a call for a special election for the term for the District Three seat. Now, be it therefore resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board, in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 18402E and Louisiana Revised Statute 18602, calls for a special election to fill the vacancy declared for its District Three seat, with primary election set for March 26, 2022, and general election set for April 30th, 2022. And be it further resolved that the qualifying period for candidates be January 26, 27, and 28, 2022. Be it further resolved that this is a true and exact copy of the resolution adopted by the St. Bernard Parish School Board at its regular monthly meeting held on August 24th, 2021." So a motion to, um, join in, join, um, acclamation?
Just join acclamation.
All in favor of the joint acclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay, next item on the agenda are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. And of course, you have before the committee meeting to add items to the agenda. Next item was superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Votchay?
I think we've accomplished about everything we need tonight.
Great job. Thank you very much, Ms. Votchay. The meeting is adjourned. Motion by Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Egan. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.